I would like to open this, uh... I would like to open this Planning Commission meeting for August the 3rd. We'll start by, uh, call please.
Commissioner Peterson?
Here.
Commissioner Mandelbaum?
Here.
Commissioner Ross?
Here.
Commissioner Carey?
President?
Commissioner Hewens?
Here.
Commissioner Baba?
Abson?
Assistant City Attorney Judge Corning?
Here.
Assistant Community District Judge Ramaan Al.
Here.
Thank you. And for now, we have this open section for public comment. However, if anybody wants to talk on any item, if you're looking for talking on PCN 17-0032, would you save that for later? You'll have a comment for it. But if anybody has any comment or wish to address this commission for any reason, may do so right now. Seeing none.
Our mics aren't on. Our mics aren't on.
They're on. You gotta scooch it up.
Yep. Scooch it up. There you go.
All righty. Thank you. See here now?
Yeah.
All righty. Seeing all of the public comment, we'll move for the approval of the agenda, please.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move to reorder the agenda, moving Agenda Item Number Eight to Agenda Item Number Thirteen, renumbering all the items in between accordingly.
So your motion is to move Item Twelve, or Item Thirteen to Eight?
Correct.
That was, uh...
No.
Item Twelve you're talking about.
Mr. Chairman, the motion, as I understood it, was to move Item Number Eight to the bottom of the list and to reorder the others accordingly. So Number Nine would become Number Eight, Number Ten would become Number Nine, Eleven would become Ten, and so forth until you get to the end of the agenda.
Or Eight will be part.
Oh, Eight will be moved to the very end of the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And so, or... Okay, we'll have the approval of the minutes. First started the minutes of the training session, I believe it was July what?
It's July 10th.
July 10th?
July 5th.
Oh, July 5th. Excuse me. Where'd you get to?
I didn't. I said July 5th.
All right, July 5th. Looking for approval of the minutes for the study session on July 5th.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the July 5th Planning Commission Study Session as submitted.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, we have the approval for the minutes of the regular Planning Commission meeting on July 6th, and there are quite a few changes and alterations that have to be made to this. Some of them very, very meaningful. So, Commissioner Carey, if you'll state what you're, you have found in the minutes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of technical changes and one change to a vote. For the record, for the July 6th Planning Commission Regular Meeting Minutes, Page Five, Seventh Paragraph, there were, to change the last sentence to that to the, the motion was, the motion was, or the request was approved by, by the chairman. Page Six, Last Paragraph, a similar request was made for a, for a five-minute recess. The chairman again granted that, that request. Page Seven, there was a vote on PCN 17-0020. I believe that vote was five-zero by the commission. So I'd like to make, make that, that change. And then the last change that I would like to suggest is Page Eight, the first paragraph, the director, Martini had some, had some additional comments that he was gonna forward to the staff. Then I'd like to have that added to the, to the minutes.
If I'm not mistaken, we should defer this until those minutes are corrected and then have the motion on it then, Doug. Thank you. So we'll take a motion to defer this, if you want.
Okay, I'll make a motion to continue the July 6th Planning Commission Meeting Minutes to have staff have an opportunity to make those changes to the minutes.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we have an announcement of committee report?
Chairman Peterson, we have another announcement of committee reports.
Any information on items?
Chairman Peterson, members of the commission, we have all the information.
All right. We'll move on to Item Number Nine then. And this will be a public hearing item, and it's PCN 17-0033, consideration of possible action on a request for a major deviation, reduction for area of, what is it, mixed-use area?
Commissioner Peterson, or Chairman Peterson, for the Planning Commission.
Ian Curtin, Senior Planner. The applicant has asked for this item be continued. There are some, some issues that had come up as we reviewed this item that we need a little more time to kind of work out how we're gonna move this through for approvals, and so they'd ask to be continued to the September meeting.
Oh, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to that effect if somebody will make it, please.
Please, this is a public hearing, so you still have to open a public hearing for this item.
We'll open the public hearing if anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and now we'll enter to promotion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move to move PCN 17-0033 to the next available agenda.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I think Commissioner, Chairman Peterson, members of the commission, the item should be continued to date.
Certain, so that would be the first meeting in September, which I believe is on September 7th. So...
In all, I'm in my motion to move PCN 17-0033 to Agenda dated September 7th, 2017.
Second still.
Second that.
Motion second again. All in favor?
Aye.
And the motion will carry. Now, we'll move on to general business items. It's BCN 17-0020.
Chairman Peterson, members of the Planning Commission, as you can remember, this item was on the last Planning Commission agenda, and there is an issue with, with ownership and trying to figure out if the entity that owns this can continue to do business, and there's still a bunch of questions that haven't been ironed out yet. The applicant has asked for this item be tabled until they can get those iron, those items ironed out, and then they'll, they'll bring it back for, for motion from the Planning Commission.
Entertain a motion to that effect, and please.
Make a motion to table the PCN 17-0020.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll go on to the presentation of the Nevada chapter of the American Planning Association, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Sparks Planning Commission. For the record, my name is Fred Steiman. I'm an Assistant Research Professor with the University Center for Economic Development at the University of Nevada Reno, and I also currently have the pleasure of serving as the Chapter Secretary for the Nevada Chapter of the American Planning Association. And on behalf of the Nevada Chapter of the American Planning Association, as well as the Center for Economic Development, it's my pleasure to be with you today. With me is Julie Hunter, who is a Senior Planner with Washoe County and our Planning Development, or Planning Official Development Officer, also with the Nevada Chapter of the American Planning Association. And today, the chapter and the center are pleased to present you your very own copy of the recently published Nevada Planning Guide, recently completed in partnership between the chapter and the Nevada Leadership Program, part of the Center for Economic Development. The general mission and purpose of the Nevada Chapter of the American Planning Association is to provide elected and appointed officials, government executives, staff, members of the public, and the private sector with professional development and training opportunities and educational opportunities as it pertains to planning in general. This marries nicely with the overall mission of the Nevada Leadership Program, the program that I direct at the university. Our mission is to work again with elected and appointed officials, government executives, staff, and members of the public and private sector to really kind of teach the nuts and bolts of government administration. And over the last several years, both the chapter and the Nevada Leadership Program have partnered to deliver a variety of programs and educational material such as the Nevada Planning Guide itself. The Nevada Planning Guide, the recent version that you have in front of you today, was really the result of about two, almost two years of writing. We had eight full-time volunteer writers from across the state compile the guide, and the guide itself contains a variety of information related to land use planning law in the state, as well as the state's open meeting laws, code of administrative ethics, and general funding and financing of government administration as it pertains to land use planning and economic development in general. We have offered to present the guide to every elected and appointed official in the state. Currently, we're making our way through northern Nevada, and then we'll head south and finish up in eastern Nevada. By the time we're all done, we expect to deliver the guide to over 500 individuals across the state, but we do encourage anyone who's interested in learning about the, or about planning in Nevada, to either go to the Nevada Leadership Program's website or the website of the Nevada Chapter in the American Planning Association and download and print out their very own copy at no cost. In addition to the guide, there's some additional information provided, kind of tucked into the front cover, information regarding the Center for Economic Development at the university, as well as some additional information about the chapter itself, as well as a few professional development opportunities that are upcoming, including the chapter's annual conference that will be held October 1st through the 4th in Carson City, as well as an upcoming global climate change that the Nevada Leadership Program is proud to deliver alongside with the chapter and other partner organizations. I'll defer now to Julie, who will also have a few comments regarding her position as the Planning Official Development Officer for the state.
Thank you. So, just for the record, Julie Hunter, recently appointed Planning Official Development Officer for the Nevada American Planning Association, also the Senior Planner for the Washoe County Health District Air Quality Management Division. You know, we feel that public health planning fits nicely with the American Planning Association, so we're, we're proud to bring the Health District to the American Planning Association. As the Planning Official Development Officer, I really serve as a reference person to, for planning resources to elected and appointed officials, and help coordinate the exchange of information and provide training materials such as an Nevada Planning Guide, which I had the pleasure of leading that project with, with the team. We, we had a really great team. I learned a lot about the nuts and bolts of, of planning. And also to provide opportunities and workshops. So if there is a planning topic that you're interested or a subject matter expert that you're interested in hearing from, please, my card is inside of the planning guide, please let me know. We can, you know, we have an upcoming conference, we can create a session, we can create a workshop, a lunch, a luncheon, a social event, anything that, that will help you with any, any of the planning topics that you're interested in. And with that, that's all, and we thank you for letting us be here.
We'll move on for a consideration and a possible adoption of Resolution 216, commending Commissioner Art Saber for his services to the city of Sparks Planning Commission, and this will be for possible action. I must get this if it was in my way. I'd be able to give you a big speech afterwards, providing this goes through. I'm not too sure now. Whereas Art Saber was appointed to the Sparks Planning Commission on January 10th, 2011, and served until June 12th, 2017, and whereas Commissioner Saber served as Chair of the Planning Commission in 2013, and whereas Commissioner Saber served as a commissioner to the Regional Planning Commission, and whereas Art served as a commissioner to the Regional Road Impact Fee Technical Advisor Committee, and whereas Commissioner Saber served unselfishly committing his time and knowledge to the making sufficient contribution to the planning process of the city of Sparks during his tenure as a member of the Sparks Planning Commission. Whereas the Sparks Planning Commission meets on a regular basis, requiring Commissioner Saber to attend us at many public hearings, workshops, and study sessions. And whereas Commissioner Saber participated in the Sparks Planning Commission review and approval of the numerous project, major projects in the Sparks, including the preparation and completion revision of the city of Sparks zoning codes and Sparks comprehensive plan. And whereas Commissioner Art was already available as a member, sharing his experience and knowledge. And whereas every member of the Sparks Planning Commission, present and past, is proud to have served with Commissioner Art. And whereas the Sparks Planning Commission recognized Commissioner Saber's contributions to the Planning Commission and to the city of Sparks, now therefore be it resolved to the Sparks Planning Commission acknowledgement and sincere appreciation to the invaluable contribution that Commissioner Art Saber has made to the city of Sparks during his tenure at the Planning Commission, passed and adopted the third day of August 2017 by the Sparks Planning Commission. Thank you, Art. Would you like to make a speech?
Of course I would. Yeah, I'm not used to being on this side of the table, you know. For the last seven years, I've been on that side. I really did enjoy it. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, staff, Doug, especially on things working with you, Mondo, thank you, all of you. This really been a pleasure, and it's something I feel deeply is so important to our area and so important to all of us. So, thank you very much.
Make this official, but you come up here and take this off my hands. It's heavy.
Yes, sir.
That done, I'll entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm prepared to make a motion for adoption of the Resolution 216, commending Commissioner Art Spurber for his service on the city of Sparks Planning Commission.
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And no opposed, I hope. And I thank you again, Art, and, and I would like to make my comment right here. I, when I first came on board, I wasn't too sure I was gonna fit in here, but there was time and times again, you turned to me and said, "We're sure glad you're on this board," and it stuck to me. Thank you, Art.
I'd like to thank you, Mr. Spurber, for bringing your fan club tonight.
Okay, we'll move on to the selection of the commissioners who serve on the Regional Road Impact Fees Technical Advisor Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
All right.
Oh, sorry, John. John, would you like a presentation?
No.
Okay. I'd like to make, make a motion to nominate Commissioner Carey for the position on the Regional Road Impact Fee Technical Advisory Committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. And now, we'll have to go back and open the public hearing items for Item Number Eight, PCN 17-0032, consideration of a possible action and request to rezone a site approximately 7.72 acres in a size from PD to, what is it, MF2/PUD, residential, multifamily.
Chairman Peterson, members of the Planning Commission, Ian Curtin, Senior Planner. As a point of clarification, there is a typo in the posting and the noticing. Wherever you see MF2PUD, it should really be MF2PD. The PUD staff has discussed this, we, staff had used PUD in the past to designate some of the areas in the vistas as being inside the handbook kind of area. That zone, that, that classification Arizona Code no longer exists at PUD, so we've changed that to PD, because that's a district that does exist in our existing zoning. Also, just as some additional clarification, this, procedurally, this case is an anomaly. Under the current zoning classification, areas that are in the zoning code that are in a plan development are not typically zoned, rezoned. As will be discussed further in, in the staff report, this, this plan development is an oddity in that it requires that rezoning as part of the procedure that is required. So we'll talk about it some more, but it, just to know it is an anomaly and an odd situation. This case, this is a rezoning request from Landstar Companies to rezone a 7.72-acre property from PD, Plan Development in the vistas, to MF2PD multifamily. The site is located at 2255 Los Altos. You can see it here on the map, highlighted in cyan. It's kind of almost a triangular piece along Los Altos, right across from the Vista Heights roundabout. This site is in the, this is plan development. Here's the, the current zoning classification for this site is PD, and the requested rezoning is to MF2PD, just to kind of give you an, an idea of what's being requested. This is the, a copy of the development map from the, the vistas, plan development. The, this is plan development was approved by special use permit in 1988. That's a, a process that's far different from what we currently do. Currently, plan development would be rezoned to PD, and a handbook would be filed as part of that rezoning. That was not the process at the time. In fact, this was the original plan development in the city of Sparks, and so there wasn't, there was no history to, to fall back on as the way they did it. And so that's part of why some of the anomalies and the oddities that come out of this, this request and this plan development occur the way they do is just because it, it was the first pass, and so there's some things that we do differently now, learning from past experience. Additionally, there's a, you can see the site here is what was originally referred to as Vista Village East. It is down here in this kind of southern corner of the, of the site, or of the, the larger plan development. Here is an overlay map that's a little hard to read, but the, the best I could put together here, that kind of indicates that, yes, that Vista Village East bubble that was drawn on the original land use map for the vistas also coincides with the, the parcel that we're discussing tonight. And so this, this site, as Vista Village East, has been designated as a multifamily site since 1988, when the... site since 1988, when the Plan Development was adopted or approved through that special use permit. The process for multifamily villages as described in the vista's handbook is, is a little different. In order to develop the areas designated as multifamily in the handbook, requires that the rezone, that they be rezoned to multifamily zoning district. That is here on page 28 of the handbook. It's also Exhibit 8 in your staff report. It said, "This plan does envision some attached homes, so in that situation, the subject property would be rezoned, example, R2, to accommodate that project when it's proposed for development." That R2 zoning district no longer exists. Basically, that is also just an example of the zoning district that could be requested. The request now is for MF2, which is essentially the successor to the R2 district as well.
If I could interrupt you for just a second?
Sure.
Can you say that the MF2 zoning designation is successor to the R2 zoning designation? What you mean by that?
The R2 zoning district, although it differs in some small ways from the MF2 zoning district, essentially the density calc's are roughly the same, so they're, they're as close as to synonymous as they could be. As I said, that R2 is just a, an example given through the, in the handbook. The handbook essentially knowing that, that district may not be what is requested, but is an example of a district that would work there. MF2 just happens to be essentially the same, just the more modern version or the one we've adopted currently.
So is it, would it be fair to say that as the city amends its zoning code from time to time, perhaps designations come and go, and you look for rough equivalencies?
Correct. That would be accurate. As mentioned earlier, the, the request is to rezone this property from PD to MF2. Staff has added the PD designation, just to help clarify that this is still within the Plan Development of the vistas. The, historically, the PUD designation was used, that was a district in the zoning code at the time, and you can see that in this map here of the vistas as a whole, all these areas that are in the hatched, kind of green with a red hatching are all SF15 PUD, which was the designation that was essentially called out in the, in the Plan Development Handbook, and so we can see that that, that practice was what was used historically in the district as well. So the MF2 zoning district is in conformance with the MF14 land use, which is what this property's land use designation, the comprehensive plan is. MF14 allows 10 to 14 units per acre, whereas the MF2 zoning district allows 12 to 14, so they overlap in that density. The comprehensive plan also specifically calls out MF2 as a permitted zoning district in that land use category. Staff has received several phone calls and letters and emails from the public and opposition, as is fairly evident tonight. There's some public here that want to comment. I've received about 12 phone calls and 25 letters and emails. The emails that I had received prior to the writing of the staff report, you received with the staff report, there was, I believe, 17 additional that have been handed out as, that I've received after this was sent out, so those emails are for you to be able to review and see the comments that have been made by the public.
And Ms. Smith, would you please include them as part of the record?
Yeah.
And publish them?
So there are three findings that are required when reviewing a rezoning application, a rezoning request. Finding one, Z1, requires that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. As mentioned earlier, this request is for MF2 zoning, which is permitted in MF14 land use designation. This also helps fulfill goals H1, policy H1, and policy H2, which all relate to availability of land for a variety, a variety of housing options in an area that can provide the necessary services. This rezoning will allow the site to be, to provide additional housing. The location of the site is in a mature Plan Development and will have access to necessary services. Policy CF1 requires that city services will be able to be provided at acceptable levels in order to be approved. There's an attached memo, which should be attached to Exhibit 16, I believe, from the city engineer that was attached to the staff report along with all of its supporting documentation, that states that city services, sewer, stormwater, and transportation can be provided at sufficient levels for this type and level of development. Finding Z2 requires that this project be consistent with the surrounding land uses. This is a map of the, of the land use categories in the vistas, and the specific subject site is there, highlighted in red, and these are all of the existing land uses that are, that are in this, in this area. This site is surrounded by single-family residential, specifically adjacent to this property on the east is Los Altos Parkway, on the north and south is actually open publics, or open space, and then on the west side, it's specifically, or actually adjacent to some single-family lots. So, single-family and multifamily residential can be compatible uses. This, you know, when, when a project comes in for this, it will have to go through the administrative review process, and at that time, potential impacts will be specifically addressed. The adjacent open space will also help to buffer this use from, from adjacent uses, or set it back from those adjacent uses. The development map from the vistas that was approved in 1988 shows that the adjacency between multifamily and single-family was, was contemplated and anticipated since 1988. And it also shows that the developer assumed, or the developer saw the single-family and multifamily in this location as to be appropriate adjacent uses. Many Plan Developments in the City of Sparks have single-family and multifamily projects or developments adjacent to each other, specifically Pioneer Meadows, Kylie Ranch North and South, Foothills, Miramonte, and Wingfield Springs all have multifamily adjacent to single-family. And then finally, finding Z3 requires public notice. This case was noticed in the Reno Gazette Journal on July 20, 2017, and notices were mailed to all property owners within 750 feet in compliance of the state law. 269 notices were mailed out. That is the end of my presentation. If you have any questions, or for me, I am available for those.
I just, if I make, Chairman Peterson, members of the Planning Commission, and this is perhaps more for the benefit of those in attendance, on a rezoning, the Planning Commission is a recommending body to the city council, and the city council makes the ultimate decision, and so whatever recommendation you make this evening will go forward to the city council. Rezonings are done by ordinance, so there would be a first reading and then a second reading and a public hearing with whatever, when the city council considers. I just wanted to clarify that.
Also, I, glad Armando said something. Staff is recommending approval for this item, so we're recommending Planning Commission make a recommendation of approval for this item. My name is Ian Creighton, I'm a senior planner.
Mr. Peterson, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, Ian? Ian?
No, please, no comments.
Ian, thanks, thanks for your report on, on finding Z1, when you say policy H1, essentially, you're discussing a lot about the city services and different things. A lot of things that have been brought forth lately have been sewer capacity, and there was a report done, I think, last October, and was this amount of density included in that report, and figuring it out for the sewer? And second of all, just on a lot of the letters and emails we got, was a lot of traffic concerns on Los Altos Parkway, especially going down towards the vistas, Vista Parkway, and just if there was any studies done that address those issues.
I'm going to let John Erickson, city engineer, answer those questions specifically.
John, please introduce yourself.
My name is John Erickson, I'm the city engineer for the City of Sparks. With regards to the sewer modeling, yes, we did include that land use. In our sewer model, and so all the parcels within the City of Sparks were, were entered into that model, and, and so the sewer is, has a capacity to handle this development. With regards to the traffic study, Traffic Works was the consultant that worked with the applicant, and they have analyzed the, the traffic on Los Altos, and have determined that, that the segment analysis is what we utilize, and that the, I believe it's, it's upwards of about 13,000 trips a day, including this project. The, the trigger to go to four lanes is 14,800, so there, there still is a buffer there with regards to having to widen.
Please just have order here, please. Thank you.
Currently, Los Altos Parkway is two lane and that.
That is correct. Yeah, and, and really what the issue is, is, is in the morning, there is a, there's competing phases at Los Altos and Vista, South Los Altos and Vista, so you have the westbound traffic that's trying to make a left turn, turn onto southbound Vista, then you have the commuters that are coming out of Spanish Springs, that's the southbound movement, and then during the school year, we've got a, a school zone in between Prater and Bering that really hampers how much traffic we can move through there. So, you know, I, I would suggest is, is really we would need to work closely with the Regional Transportation Commission and see what kind of improvements we can make at that particular intersection, because that is, that, that particular intersection is the, is where two regional roads come together, so it would be eligible for, for regional funding to make improvements at that location.
That's at the corner of Los, South Los Altos and Vista?
That's South Los Altos and Vista, yeah, that's correct. And if you have any further questions, technical questions with regards to the study, Mr. Lauren Chilson is here in the audience, and he'd be able to address any of those questions.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Erickson? Policy is the 14,800 daily trips?
That is a regional policy that's adopted. It's, was adopted in the 2040 RTP.
So that's not a City of Sparks policy?
No, that is not. Those, those two, those roadways, Vista and Los Altos, are considered, considered regional roads.
And who is in charge of the regional roads?
The Regional Transportation Commission, in which we are a party to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is the applicant here? Sir, you have 20 minutes, and please state your name.
My name's Mike Masterson, I'm the owner of Landstar Companies. I really don't have much to say.
Want to add her in?
Questions I can answer, but.
Commissioners have any questions of the applicant? Yes, sir.
I'd love to figure out how to get this on, maybe it is on. Let me use just a couple of minutes of Mike's time. My name is Lauren Chilson, I'm principal engineer with Traffic Works. I think it's important we make one clarification. The, the level of service policy for Los Altos Parkway is D, and the threshold for that policy is actually 17,500. The quoted number 14,800 is the threshold between C and D. The actual policy is between D and E, so I think Mr. Erickson just remembered the nom, the different number there, but I wanted to make that, that point. There's a little bit more margin than what it sounded like there, and I'd be happy to show you that, that policy if you need further clarification, but I want to make that point. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer other questions.
Mr. Chairman, would you mind kind of explaining for the commission and the public what the difference between level of service D and C is?
Sure. All levels of service are characterized, sort of like grades in school, they're A through F, but level of service A is exceptionally good, right? Very little delay, very little congestion, you might not even meet any cars around you. And so from a regional planning perspective, we really use D because that's something that can be provided and achieved region-wide, right? We cannot design all of our roadway system to be exceptional all the time, where we'd have eight-lane freeways for every road in town, and that's simply not reasonable. So most regions set a policy of D, that's very common, and what it means is that it's very serviceable, and typically, the volume capacity ratio might be something on the order of, say, .7, .7 or 70, the roadways function during peak times at about 70% of their capacity, something on that order. E might be around .85, 85%, and then F is typically a full V to C of 1, the volume is at capacity theoretically. So then you have breakdown conditions at level of service F. D is something that's very manageable and very common as a policy.
Thank you. Thanks for, I see your traffic impact study was done August 9th of 2016 for the Miramonte development, looks like that was up there. Was multifamily, again, considered on this parcel?
Yeah, let me clarify that as well. We did perform a study back in August for the Miramonte project that evaluated those townhomes. This project was, we performed another analysis this last week for this project specifically that added on to that, it used the Miramonte study as a baseline condition, which included build-out of that section, of the Miramonte all-approved lots, plus existing traffic, plus the Miramonte project, the 448 townhomes, and then we've added in the traffic from this proposed project, which is, well, we used 108 units, which is the maximum allowed density on that zoning. Reality is, because of topography, there'd probably be something more like 75 units, but to be conservative, we used 108. So that traffic was then added on top of the Miramonte project, so we cover all known development. With adding all that traffic in, we still have acceptable level of service, actually within level of service C, not even passing that threshold into D, and we, and we show that the project does not have a significant impact.
Thank you very much. So now, this is a public hearing. At this time, we will take the comments from the public. We do ask you to fill out a request to speak, and you will have three minutes, and I will be very firm on that three minutes, to the size of this crowd. So, going forth, do you have?
Chairman Peterson, I have 37 cards in opposition. If you do not wish to speak, would you like me to read those names into the record?
Yes, please, would you please?
Alternatively, you could include the cards as part of the record.
We don't?
Not typically, but you could ask that they be included?
I really would like it this, this particular time.
Right.
Because after all, we have a list here, you know, so many that.
Okay. For clarification, these 37 are in opposition of this project. I'll just read the names. Evelyn Tiff, Barry Tiff, Irene Connors, Jody Erickson, Tina Clowers, and I apologize if I mess up someone's name. Pablo Mestri, Kathleen Wagner, Jason Albright, Julie Albright, Karen Guttenhoff, Mary Newhoff, Zoraida Cummings, Tracy Clanton, Brittany Dutra, Jacob Dutra, Darren Charles, Amy Charles. Charles, Jane Stoner, Greg Moore, Louis Palouche, Joan Palouche, Lucille Hill, Nicholas Shanto, Yvonne Shanto, Benjamin Luke, Deborah Reeve, John Wilburn, Carmen Milky, Rosalie Wilburn, William Marley, Joe Heimich, Jessica Medulla, Joseph Medulla, April Santana, Richard Kingsley, Ellen Kingsley, Jana Atkinson, Israel Lumis, Melissa Love, Justin Miselli, David Croner, Gary Godfrey, Susan Godfrey, Joseph Musallustali, sorry about that one, Sharon Heck, Catherine Castaneda, Philip Castaneda, and Michael Kershing.
All opposed?
All opposed.
Thank you.
Chairman Peterson, I have 27 cards in opposition that wish to speak.
Or Gina. How's your name? You'll just have to--
Oh, that's an R. We're sorry about that. We are so very sorry. But there's gonna be a lot of mispronounced names.
That's okay. Don't start the clock till it's my turn.
All right.
Okay, Marley, let me see if I can get this up, honey. And no.
For the record, I'm Tina Perry. We can't hear you guys. And Doug, the voice of silence. We can't hear you at all, Doug. Okay, for the record, I'm Tina Perry, Citizens of Sparks. God's got you grown up. I don't know how I can, I can't take the cursor and work the map, which-- Okay, okay. Well, because I wanted to point out areas with respect, because this project, I've been studying it for 20 years. So if you guys can't figure out the handbook, you can ask me if you can't reach Margaret. Okay? Number one, the lot that they're talking about, if you look at page 15 of the map, which Ian showed you, you'll see AC, which is multifamily. And the truth is, that school was moved and all of that was moved. There was never an intent, if you're gonna do this, we're gonna need to open the planning handbook. And I'm not sure anybody wants to do that. You really don't want to open a design handbook. Especially, you don't want to open one on the vistas. And with respect to John Erickson about this being a regional road, the Vista's Homeowners' Association has a contract with the City of Sparks. We maintain Los Altos to the tune of $250,000 a year. So what you permit to go on that parkway has a definite fiscal impact on the Vista's Homeowners' Association and those of us who live there. So I would respectfully request a fiscal impact report because I don't think in good conscience we can say this does not have a fiscal impact. Now, on page 22, the red flames there are what would have happened if God had sneezed the other direction the day the Earthstone fire started. Okay? So if you look up there in the right, you'll see it was still called the Belmar Fire. Upper right corner, can y'all see that? Okay. I looked out from my mailbox and I'm looking at that fire. Now, when this was built, we had Tony Armstrong, Dever Barker, and Paul Mattione. We had honorable people putting together what was, I consider, a good project for Sparks. But you can look at that map and you can see, and fire's not gonna step on anything, so don't count on fire to come in and say they can't do it. But the reason that we have tile roofs is because it's such a fire hazard. As it tells you on the legend to the map, there are no backroads out of the vistas. When I go down to Alve Sorensen's to swim every morning, there's between 10 and 15 cars lined up to get out of Canyon Vista Apartments and High Rock Apartments. At the time it was approved for high density on that parcel, Miramonte had not been built. The planned build-out for Sparks in 2002 was 7,000 dwelling units for the City of Sparks. We passed that. Los Altos is not a local road anymore. It's a through road. The reason the firemen take road is because it's the fastest road there is. How this thing is set up is you'd be coming off that roundabout, which is the only exit for all of Miramonte and all of the upper vistas. That little tiny street going into the roundabout there, that's it. Now you're gonna, and you've already got blockages. And you're gonna put another exit onto Los Altos, approximately 150 feet from Goodwin, which is my road. That doesn't make any sense. That this, that's a death canyon up there, the way it sits right now. And to put anything else up there that would block traffic, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about stopping traffic. Okay? There is no, it took, it takes an average of seven lights in the morning to get through.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've been a resident of Sparks for the majority of my life. I grew up in Spanish Springs. My first job was a lifeguard at the city, lifeguard for the City of Sparks at Opeo Pool. I've seen the city pursue many grand plans throughout my life, and unfortunately, concept has often exceeded execution. The Vista's planned community, however, has been masterfully executed. It is one of the most sought-after communities in Sparks. Its homeowners' association has held residents to the high standards the neighborhood deserves. And our schools have remained consistently highly ranked. Now is not the time to increase housing density in this area. Sparks currently faces more traffic problems than ever. And I'd also like to point out that the traffic studies provided were done during the summer break and so didn't really take into account any of the traffic that anyone would experience with the school zones on Vista. So the backups are significantly worse during those months. Bud Beasley School is already at maximum capacity and is already expanded to the maximum amount the Washoe County has planned for. Additionally, building apartments at the top of a beautiful Los Altos Drive will create an eyesore for those of us who enjoy walking, the miles of walking and biking trails, as well as the view that most of us enjoy from our backyards. I'd like to humbly and respectfully ask our elected officials to adhere to the original plan for this community that has yielded such amazing results and created a fantastic neighborhood for all of us to live in.
Gail?
Guttendorf, yeah.
Is it Gail?
Oh, there it is.
Thank you for hearing me. My name is Gail Guttendorf. I live at 2185 Canyon Vista Drive. We are at the cul-de-sac on the bottom of the planned development. Our houses, we adjust right to the hill. And our concern is not only the traffic concerns, but the hydraulics. During the 1997 storm that you all remember, from that hill, we have a very steep incline going up to that property. During that time, with all of the rain, about 10 feet down from the slope from our location going up on top to that property, water escaped about 10 feet down and it appeared as if it was a flood coming out of the hill. Presumably, that could very well be the shale, but the water had to get out. So our concern is the hydraulics and as well as the traffic. And I know Bud Beasley School is there. We have some trouble getting in and out during school time. So there is a concern there, traffic getting out on that. So our concern is not only the traffic, but how this location will do to our location because we look up. So we're concerned about that. So thank you very much for your time.
Please, we not clap after his presentation because it's gonna drag this on for a long time. Please, we can respect it, your views, but please bear with it. Let's move this on as peaceful and fast as we can, please. Edward Barrosa?
Hi, my name's Edward Barrosa, and I appreciate the time to speak in front of you. Let's see. Reasons on the incident, extremely limited access to the property. Debt taken, found a physical box in the property. Where I found out that it cannot be moved, so it's going to be limited, hard to get in all the property. Number two, 7.72 acres, huge part of the hill. So it's not really 7.72 acres that's usable. Number three, dangerous, because of the huge increase in vehicles that can be exiting the apartment complex in the morning, right across the sidewalk, right lane used by hundreds of students that walk, and riders, scooters, and bikes, bike easily every day. FYI, on 85th Street, there is not a sidewalk to put the children to use, on the side that they're gonna put the complex. So if they're coming right across, where the bike lane, the walk lane, and also the path that all the residents use to walk their dog, their kid, is right there, they're gonna have to be dodging several hundred cars a day going on this park. The traffic on Los Altos, we talked about it's out of control. Four years ago, there was eight cars in the lane. Last year, it was backed up to the Silver, Silver Bear Swim School. And I predict this year, that it'll be backed up to the turnabout because of all the houses they're building at the top of Bellmar, are gonna be coming from the school. So school starts, traffic's gonna be out of control. You know, apartment complex, it's gonna be noisy, prime, congestion, and with the neighborhood it was located, I just can't see it fitting in. When we showed the map of it, there's a Mr. Krieger talking about, he said 30 years ago that he somehow was reading their minds, that 7.72 acres, they were thinking about putting in multi-use. And if you saw the map surrounding, it's gonna be a single-family home, which is, which is north, so I don't really know if somebody was really thinking 30 years ago, they're gonna take this one little part for the park. Okay. You know, I guess the reality is too, everybody in this room is just like, assessed like a $400 assessment from the homeowners' association to fix the dishes this last year. You know, we all paid to use the, you know, to keep the greens good, to use the walk lanes for our kids, the park, pay for all this. I mean, I don't see, I have 100 people living in the apartment, I'm pretty much paying, I'm paying for the homeowners' association. We all do the area the way we do. So I don't really think that story either, since people live there and maintain their property for years. Bud Beasley, that's probably near capacity for the students. I mean, more students, and with all the houses they're building at the top of Bellmar right now, they're crazy up there, the apartment complex. I mean, I can't, you're gonna have to go to year-round, students are gonna be multi-traffic, which I think most people in the neighborhood don't wanna do. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Smith, please. Please, no. Gary Smith?
Hello? All right. Good afternoon. I've been here for 23 years. I've reviewed, explained, and discussed the board regarding rezoning and development parcels and come to express my thoughts. In the background, this is PUD, is the oldest PUD in the City of Sparks and predates current code. Let's remember, in 1988, Mr. Boebel was the one who ran the vote. And last November, he was through the trail of the Hill, not the legal law. For 1917, and thousands of Sparks citizens, voters, and taxpayers live in the vistas now. The status of multifamily homes is not consistent with the original plans. What was considered as a master plan for single-family, multifamily, community center, and a fire station does not exist. What is making it so is that the planning staff were unable to find any documentation or rationale for why the master plan designated areas for multi-plans were never developed. As we have precedent, the PUD plan to be ignored, why must we put blinders on now and insist that a 30-year-old document is sacrosanct and must be blindly followed? When the Vista HOA member, the HOA asked why this parcel needs to be rezoned, the staff replied that it was a requirement of the planned development handbook. That's a direct quote in your packet. The 2015 comprehensive plan is appropriate for new developments on the drawing board, but now we're talking about an established neighborhood, almost 30 years old. The Vista's PUD was put forth with a mixture of single-family and condos, a community center, and a fire station. The PUD handbook is outdated, not adhered to, and does not reflect what has transpired in the last 30 years. Plan-- headache. Staff-- neighborhoods of existent, multifamily and condo units adjacent, but they're all-- you know, 20-some years later. To change, I think, is just a bad idea. I would ask the commission now, 2017, not to be tied to a 30-year-old archaic planning document that hasn't been formed, and not take action to rezone this parcel. Will you consider what the citizens of Sparks today say? Or will you favor the petitioner, Mr. Michael Masterson, a resident of Yorba Linda, California? Thank you.
Please, folks, we would like to move this on faster. No applause.
Thank you.
Thank you. William, William Wingham?
Mr. Chairman, suggesting, if I may, could we maybe call up two speakers at a time? We can fill both chairs and maybe save everyone a little bit of time.
Yeah, let's go one at a time for a while, Commissioner, and we'll get back--
Hard to read this name, but it's, whose phone number? William?
Well, I'm gonna put this aside--
Can't read it.
Yeah, it's number six and I--
William-- Could be, yeah. William Wagner--
Yeah, could be.
Yes, William Wagner.
William Wagner, yeah.
You gotta get these, it's too late now, but if these that are printed are a lot better than the written rotten.
I was the son of a doctor.
We'll give you a handwriting class after the meeting.
Anyway, I hope everybody can hear me. Am I talking loud enough? First of all, I'd like-- that came here tonight to support the negative vote against this. They're terrific people in this room, and I really appreciate them showing up. The key area of traffic-- it'll be all right. Hopefully, you won't-- the park-- towards the vistas, where we have the beautiful parkway. I don't want to see two lanes being coming either way. We don't want to have that happen. The key-- is if the people who are listening do that right, and you think that's the major decision, whether you wanna listen to it or do it. Because it's really-- we're not supposed to, or control, or control the fire, or control the-- that we need to. The conflict, we've all been used to it. We need everybody to give us a good negative vote. Please, hear me when I'm saying, we need your help and we need your support. Because that's the way we're here. We're here to support-- and this is what we need to do. All right?
we need to. The conflict zone, we've all been used to it. We need everybody to give us a good negative vote. Please, hear me when I'm saying, we need your help and we need your support, because that's the right here, right here, to support, and this is what we need to do, all right? So make the right call, make the right call, because these people deserve, they work hard for their home, they pay their dues, we can't, all right? Thank you very much.[619.54][619.54](APPLAUSE).
Danell Nastiel?
Mestre.
Nastiel, sorry about that.
I'm Daniel Mestre.
And next, please, be on guard for our loss. Hirsch, thank you.
I'm Daniel Mestre. I've been in the community fourteen years, and that son of a doctor and I walked around a hundred houses last Sunday, passing out forms to let people know what was going on. And the houses that we went to were all along Pastel Tunda, all down Canyon Vista, heading west. We were on both sides handing out pamphlets to let people know. Every door that opened, nobody knew that this was happening. Nobody knew that an apartment complex was going to be built up above. And the only thing that I ask for them to do is that there are 1,478 homes in our community, in our community, but what they're saying that we've built and we enjoy our community, let 1,478 people know what's gonna be happening in our community, because we are all in it with our traffic, our, our schools, our homes, traffic, everything that we live in this small community is affected by this. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And last, Hirsch. And next would be Kurt Woodlift.
I have lived in the vistas.
State your name, and address.
I have lived in the vistas since 1993, and I love it. It's a great community, but we do not need and do not want these multifamilies. I have lived where there are apartments before, and trust me, it is not fun. Our traffic situation is terrible, the school, it's overcrowded, we just don't need it. And as far as the roundabout goes, I've nearly been rear-ended twice in that roundabout because people refuse to slow down. And I almost have a motorcycle in my backseat, but we don't want it because I know the type of people who live in apartments. Thank you.
Kurt Woodlift.
Is there a Kurt Woodlift?
How about Spencer Erickson?
Spencer Erickson, as you said, I live at 2265 Stoneview Drive in the vistas. There'll be plenty of people before and after me there speaking eloquently about why as a community, we're opposed to this apartment complex. I figured I would take a shot as an engineer at addressing the zoning question that's before you, and specifically in Mr. Critten's, Critten's assessment about that the rezoning to multifamily use fits with the surrounding land use. So as you can see from those maps, this department complex would be an island of apartments within a sea of single-family homes. And I have no doubt that back in 1988, in the master plan, there was conceived to have apartment buildings within the vistas. You can see from the map that there's three different areas, but if you read that plan closer, they talk about all those apartment complexes coming together along with the school, a fire station, and a community center to provide a village atmosphere in the center of the vistas. And none of those other aspects, save the school, have been built. So I think it's a disingenuous reading of the master plan to look at a built-out development thirty years after the plan with no other multifamily homes, and look at one isolated piece of land and think that it's consistent with that master plan to put a multifamily complex in the middle of that built-out development. Speaking as a homeowner, we also have concerns as directly impacted by this apartment building. Besides all the traffic issues that everyone's already spoken to, we're concerned about parking. As has been stated, that lot is only 7.7 acres. I would say two or three of those acres are on a steep hillside that aren't developable. And if you're gonna put seventy-five units, I don't see how you can fit enough parking spaces to fit all the residents parking and all their visitors parking. And you can't park on Los Altos Parkway, so any extra overflow parking from that complex is gonna spill out into the surrounding neighborhoods on Goodwin and Dry Gulch and Stoneview. And that is certainly not consistent with the current land use of all the single-family homes around it. Other people have spoken about the character of the vistas, and why we all like living there, and the green belt. Not impugning the character of people that live in apartments, I think we can all agree that it's a more transient population of people that aren't homeowners, they're not taking pride in maintaining their property, they're not feeling like they're a member of a community. It's a place for them to stay in between other movements, to other places to live. And I guess the last thing I would just say, I don't think everyone here is opposed to all development at all costs. We're not expecting that that piece of land is gonna remain bare ground forever. We're just asking that if it is developed, it stays within the consistent use of what the existing homes there are. If you'd planned a zoning change to make it single-family homes and put fifteen, twenty, and twenty-five homes on there, I don't think you'd have any turnout tonight. It's merely the fact of this development that is so out of character with the rest of development that has got people up in arms in protecting their way of life that they like. Thank you for your time.[1020.13][1020.13](APPLAUSE).
Joyce. Joyce Carter.
My name is Joyce Carter, I live at 2271 Stoneview Drive. I moved there in 1993 when they first started building. I agree with everyone who has spoken, people that are here who live in our neighborhood, uh, it is a great neighborhood, and we're likely to remain same. I prefer about the traffic, school, safety of children. I'm a walk man, I'm seriously concerned about what happens to the kids. It would be very insane. I had a plan on speaking, but since you called my name, I'm going to bust my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy, Randy Connors. And next will be Tom Munzles.
Howdy, my name is Randy Connors, and I live at 2326 Evacus Court in Sparks. And I would like to thank the commission for your attention to the details of this particular event. And I also like to thank my fellow citizens and neighbors for also coming here. I think democracy works best when we all participate, and we know that some old documents from 1988 necessarily rule our lives. I'm sure the Pi would probably had a different kind of plan for this area too, but that really wasn't, that doesn't make any difference to us today. One of my main concerns is, of course, that the traffic, like everyone else, and one of the things I'm concerned about too, is excavation of the property. I'm not sure exactly how much land will have to be taken off that property, but it's, I'm sure it's gonna be significant, and I don't think the traffic studies that have been done figure that into it. The number of trucks that have come out of that road to take all the dirt out of there to make that area livable and buildable. And so I'd like to see if the city staff could do something about that. And on that, I'm sorry, I wanna make a little comment here too about city staff. It always seems like for any kind of development, that they always speak for the developer, not really necessarily for the citizens. Very rarely do they have any negative thing to say about any kind of development, but it's always the positive things, and always especially the little details in other documents that they talk about that would approve, that would move for approval. And one of the other things I have to add is, Mike, as the owner, if you would commit a decision to keep the same number of units for the apartment complex, and that you would basically agree not to increase the number of units that you have planned for that, because that's one of my concerns too, is that, and that's maybe something that the city staff should address or look into as well. If this is approved, will they have the ability to bump up the number of apartments? That's a big concern for me, because that could be a two-story development initially, and then it goes to three-story, four-story, who knows? So, and also, Mike, I'd like to ask that if this was developed, that you make a commitment to the neighborhood, that you would also make payments to the HOAs for the preservation of the parkway. I don't see anything like that in the plan, and I would like to see something like that, at least some kind of admission that, you know, that a parkway understands the viability of this neighborhood and the uniqueness of this neighborhood. Because unfortunately, I think sometimes the way these things go, they always get approved, but, you know, and they always change. But anyway, and then my last thing is that, again, we're talking about the traffic, and again, the city engineer would talk about, you know, how, one of the ways we can manage this smaller parkway is to, you know, basically go to a, like you seen Haven Bay itself, but fully, highly basically go on Los Altos, and also fully, be buried. And also, one of the things I didn't really recognize is this, when the traffic in Vista here, when it's rolling over, and we, and schools open, it's gonna be a park, and, well, some people did mention that, but I wanna emphasize that this could be a park.
Thank you.
Anyway, thank you so much for your attention and the ability to speak. Thank you.
Tom Munzle. And then, next would be James Clopton.
Okay, and actually, my name is Tom Munios.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem. And I live at 4688 Goodwin Court in the cul-de-sac, and these are some of my concerns. Number one is, I just was thinking about drainage issues. You know, right now in that area, I assume the water just soaks into the natural ground, but, you know, what happens, you know, where's this water gonna go? I think another gentleman mentioned some issues with the flooding. The other is high structure. Currently, there are no two-story structures in this area, so an apartment, you know, if it's three stories high, it would be an eyesore, it just doesn't fit into the residential one-story home location there. And right now, it's that I live right behind on this rock hill, on the other side would be where this parkway would be built. Right now, I have a total patio area, I really don't want that, you know, to have someone in an apartment building, you know, looking down into my backyard. Also, this rock hill is right now, to me, it's a home of snakes, lizards, squirrels, gophers. I just kinda wonder what would happen with the construction, would this drive these animals towards, you know, the residential area? I mean, I just, I'm just, I don't know. Also, as people have mentioned, the traffic, again, it might create a nightmare traffic situation. Now, lastly, this is a beautiful, quiet, safe, single-family neighborhood, and it's been my home for seventeen years. I just ask the commission, you know, please, don't destroy this community by lying in area in question to be rezoned for the purpose of building apartments. It's just a bad idea. And I believe it's the duty of the commission to take into account all of the things I just mentioned, and the ones that have been mentioned by my fellow residents living in the community, and just do the right thing and vote no on rezoning the area in question. Thank you so much for listening.
James Clopton. And next to follow will be Jacqueline and Sam Miller.
Good evening. Let me speak tonight. My name is Jim Clopton. I'm here with my wife, Tracy, a forty-five-year Sparks resident. We're strongly opposed to the longstanding zoning plan. The areas, the roads are not sufficient for any more traffic at the AM or PM rush hour. Just learned 17,500 car rule, but is that per hour over a 24-hour span? Because plenty of cars can be there at three in the morning. I didn't know which 17,500, which hour that was chosen around. Anyway, there's not enough room. That's been noted by plenty of my neighbors. Backed up on the swimming pool area, soon to be backed up to the current apartment over there on the right as you're going up the hill. I would like to be a student, but we've spoken, we already have, seven hundred and seventy-nine students, which is far too many. My family units have already been installed over the last few years. The cost of setting sets, my son wanted to add. Yeah, as some people have asked about paying the dues, would you pay? We appreciate paying, that's what we get for those dues. Two hundred and ninety dollars a year it is right now. I'm just wondering if a sixty-four-year complex is gonna pay two hundred and ninety times sixty-four a year to, you know, exactly pay their dues. And what about the property value decrease? I have around seventy-five or seven hundred feet, and there's, last gentleman spoke, multiple homes. Are they gonna lose property value? They're definitely gonna lose back their private, and that hill is gone. Anyway, as I was mentioning here, the request for zoning change is just too, with the genuine model of our community and our neighborhood. And my wife and I respectfully ask for no zoning change on this parcel. And truly, not because we're anti-growth, by any means we're not, but because we're supporters of intact plan development. Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you, James.
Can I donate those fifty-six seconds to the next guy?
Jacqueline and Sam Miller.
My name is Jacqueline Miller. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my husband, Sam Miller. We are residents of the vistas since 1999. We back up to the roundabout. Our backyard is on the parkway, roundabout. That was not there when we purchased our home, that became a development requirement when Miramonte went onto the books. In the eighteen years that we've lived in our home, we have never, ever experienced a day that there was not traffic from development, all the way up to triple trucks going around the roundabout. Now they can take Belmar, but that isn't always the case. I really don't know what the requirements are of the contractor to see that triples do not go on Los Altos through the roundabout. I can only appeal to you as a seventy-four-year-old and as well as my husband, that we bought this as a retirement home. We have invested thousands of dollars just in our landscaping, and we really appreciate the environment of our community. I will not go over all the issues that other people have brought up about traffic and so forth, but I really am in disagreement with what was said here from the gentleman that said there was a traffic report done. It is not accurate as to what's going down Los Altos every day, because we have become a through street, just like Vista is a through street from Spanish Springs. We have now become one of the through, you know, thoroughfares through the neighborhood, not just local to our neighbors, but coming from Costco neighborhood area as well, from Los Altos on that end. I thank you very much for your time, and I hope you really put a lot of heart and thought into this consideration. Thank you.[1763.16][1763.16](APPLAUSE).
Terry, Terry Riddle.
My name's Terry Riddle, and I live at 5196 Canyon Run, and I live in house, I live in, at 5196 Canyon Run, and I've been there for, since 1992. I live in house one, lot number one, and so I've seen everything go on in that neighborhood. I live in house one, lot number one, and so I've seen everything go on in that neighborhood. Okay, what's going on in this neighborhood? It is a noise issue, and it's noise because it's, this is located on a mountain and in a canyon. That's why they call Canyon Run Canyon Run. We're in a canyon. Canyons echo, and nobody's addressed that, and I find that to be a real problem. When it's in a canyon like that, there's no control over trucks now, there's no control over cars with exhaust, there's no control over any of that. The City of Sparks is doing nothing for that, or, and in my opinion, to be done to address that, I have an inch and a half and two inches of sheet rock on the back of my house, and I write where they hit passing gear every day. And I tell you, it shakes my house. The nails in my house are out, driven out this far from the vibration. There are at least one in this group or more that live on Canyon, on the parkway, and these people have backyards, and I guarantee you that. That's a fact. Nobody can use their backyard because the traffic is so bad. It needs to be addressed. Mr. Erickson over here and his rep, Bud Beasley, Lieutenant, the Captain, and everybody else has been up there to that school, and years about what's going on on this parkway, and nobody's done anything about it. And I say it's high to somebody takes control of it, namely the City of Sparks, and do something because of the noise. You can't take a guy with an expensive exhaust truck, and he's going to, he's going to hear it echo, he's going to as far as it'll go, because it sounds great. That's why they buy them. That's what they do. Nobody's addressing that. I'm addressing it because that's what's going on. As soon as they, they love it, their foot goes to the floor. When the speed limit is at thirty-five miles per hour, and it used to be at, that became a, raise the speed limit. I don't know who did it, but the City of Sparks did it. Huh?
Oh, I'm sorry. I saw a flash up there. Go ahead.
The City of Sparks raised that speed limit and ruined that, that has to be readdressed, and they need to lower that speed limit back down. Number one, for kids. Number two, for people walking their dogs. Number three, for the children trying to cross the street. I sit and watch the kids cross Canyon Run across Los Altos with their lunch, absolutely frightened to death to cross there, because...
Thank you, Terry.
All right.
Sorry for the interruption.
Thank you very much.
Kathleen Williams. Folks, we still got a few more to go, so let's hold the clapping, please. Kathleen Williams. And next will be Shane McLaughlin.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Williams, and I apologize because I didn't intend to speak also, but just here to support everybody. The biggest issues to me, as we're hearing, are the traffic and the safety, and we, as a, I'm a teacher in this district as well, and I am telling you, I know firsthand what an overcrowded room is like. I'm going to be teaching thirty-two kids this year, and we don't need to add any more than we need to at this time, and that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. We have an R Richardson? Is there an R Richardson, please?
Yeah, but I didn't wish to speak. That's okay.
Thank you very much. Kevin Maloney? And next will be Frank Hill.
Good evening. My name's Kevin Maloney. I live at 5125 Canyon Run Drive. I've been a homeowner and resident of the vistas since nineteen ninety-two. Additionally, I served on the initial board of directors that took control of the vistas from the developer back in ninety-two. I found it interesting, we had over a hundred and fifty people when, here in the building, when this session started earlier this evening, which is roughly about ten percent of the home, homes in the population of the vistas, which is a remarkable turnout. In years past, the, we had a problem getting a quorum to even be able to initiate business on behalf of the association. I also thought it was interesting that your own planning staff referred to the rezoning as an anomaly. Yes, it is. You're taking a twenty-nine-year-old document, and with the hindsight of decades of policy massaging it to someone's own self-serving ends. So, obviously, I'm in opposition of this, and would ask for you to consider not voting in favor of it, and look at your constituency that's represented here tonight, and respect their wishes. Thank you.
You. Frank Hill, please. How about a Wesley Griffin? How about a Julia Richardson?
Well, Julia Richardson, 2296 Vista Terrace Lane. I just want to echo again about the traffic, and how many of you have ever had to evacuate in the face of a fire? I don't know. I don't know how many of you have, but it's pretty scary. Traffic is backed up, it's going to be really scary. One thing that was written, did call for a fire station, that wasn't built, but also I suspect a lot of the ground conditions have changed since then. Cheek grass is much more prevalent on the hillsides, and it's really not if a fire, and, whoo, you can tell I'm not used to speaking in public. The Greenstone Fire could have been very different had the winds blown differently. So, that is a consideration, and I don't think the traffic, they considered that. Thank you.
You. Do we have, is that Urle Carter?
Errol. Oh, they just left, okay.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Daryl Clum? Clum?
Oh, there you go.
I thought I checked the box not to speak, but after everybody's speaking, I thought I'd speak. I live on Stoneview Drive also, and we love our community, and I'm sorry for that person that lives so close to the roundabout where the development is going to go. I think it's ridiculous. I think maybe the gentleman there should have lived in the complex for five years if you give him approval, and move from California to Nevada like most Californians are doing. No traffic study was done when it snows. No one has said anything about when it snows up there. We can't get around. Half the time, the city doesn't plow our streets. It's going to be a disaster. Thank you very much.
How about a Jeff Lour? L O U R, I think it is. Jeff? Oh, Love.
Sorry about that. 346 Stoneview Drive, and I'll keep it short, I'm just reiterating what everybody else is saying. I was lucky enough to grow up in the vistas and moved out with my now-wife at age twenty-one, and we tried the apartment living, and then I had a family and realized that was not a place to raise a family, at least I didn't think so. So, I don't think we should put an apartment complex smack dab in the middle of this beautiful community that we all work very hard to live in and upkeep up. Thank you for letting me speak, and I hope you guys make the right decision.
Thank you, Jeff. And how about an Angelo Carmella?
My name's Angelo Carmella. I live at 4526 Goodwin Road. Wasn't planning on speaking, but I'm totally in opposition to this because I'm concerned about safety issues, I'm concerned about crime, I'm concerned about traffic, and we have a beautiful neighborhood up there. It's safe and comfortable, and I would suggest if you haven't been up there, you should take a ride up, take a look at that tiny little lot that they plan on putting that huge complex on. Thank you.
You. I have no other written ones. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this matter? You must come forward and fill out a card, state your name and address, please.
I already filled out a card, but I said I didn't want to speak, but they're asking me. Mary Newhall. I live at 4692 Goodwin Court. I've lived there for twelve years. Moved here when I retired from Los Angeles. The vistas is a beautiful, beautiful community. The homeowners association does a wonderful job of maintaining the integrity, you know, of just the landscaping and how people keep their houses and everything. I cannot understand, with all the land there must be to build apartments, why anyone would want to plop an apartment building down in that spot in the midst of totally nothing but single-family dwellings. You know, it's been that way a long time, and that people would like to stay that way. It's a bad location, just, you know, from every standpoint. It's going to be really bad for noise. I happen to live fairly close to where it will be. I have no idea how much of that hill behind there they plan to take down, but I believe it is two- to three-million-year-old basalt. I don't think it's going to be easy to get down. It's just, it's very, very sad, and I'm worried about property values, as I'm sure other people are. I just think it's a really stupid plan, and I hope you will vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ben Luke. I live at 2284 Vista Terrace Lane. I want to make sure I understand what the meaning of this, this D rating for the streets is. My understanding, it's on an A-through-F scale, and so what we're saying is that this currently has a rating of a D. Adding more apartments is only going to reduce that to an F rating. I don't personally think that it's acceptable to say something that's a D, which to me is a failing grade, put it down to an F rating. Thank you, that's all I wanted to say.
Those of you that had filled out a request but didn't want to speak, we're here, we have to give you all a reasonable time to speak in your thing, but I had read in the record that you're opposed to this and you choose not to speak, so please don't double up on me if you can, please. Thank you, sir.
My name is Jonathan Phillips, 5397 Desert Stone. I'm a teacher at, uh, Kitty, Kitty Don's here. Thank you for having me. Every day I, and right before I go to school, I get all my kids, because that's, I'm going to school, you know, usually I'm on the way, but I see Jeff with her shoes that have those little roller skates, and she's crossing the, and she can jab, better be careful, and she goes over to the path, right, cutting, and she's zooming, and it's not even, it has all the, and she's zooming. I think it's, I don't imagine, I see Kitty running, second-grade sister, are taking care of her, and they're running so far ahead, and they're saying, ah, this is the kind of thing that happens, and with this tiny little spot space that you want to go and have people run into, these kids, someone's going to get hit, and they're going to run over, and you are going to have to look at your face and say, we approve that. And that scares me, especially with my kids, going to go to school. The other thing is, our sixth-grade, we have three, three classes. Midnight, fifth grade help, but our sixth graders are maxed out. Why? Because the fifth graders, we have five classes, the fourth grade has five, third grade has two, second grade, six, third grade, six. If you notice all the numbers, and it's going to continue, especially with the Belmar unit and the other, I also, at Desert Stone, I love to kick my walk and my dog, and that's probably where I can be, you know, it's on the top of the hill, where they have all the cut, cut-out walk, two dogs, I love to go there, but I know that that line is going to go through at some point, and what are we going to do when everyone at Vista has it? What are we going to do, especially when we have a lot of, I don't understand, because the school, the school, it is overrunning, and we're doing the best job we can, but if we let it happen, it's going to be nice at the school, and the safety of children needs to be improved. Okay? Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
My name is Joe Heineck. I live at 2202 Snowdrift Court, and I also was not planning on speaking today, but when I bought the home in two thousand, or in ninety-seven, I was not only assured, but in writing, that there would be no development within three blocks past my home. Well, three blocks past my home, there's seven hundred homes up there. Everything from, from two blocks past my home, all the way up the mountain and around the side. Not only is there a traffic concern, one of my businesses is serving DeAndrea and the vistas, and it's impossible to service these people in the morning because of the traffic. Not only is, is that a concern, but the children, like it or not, they're on their phones. They don't pay attention to any traffic at all. They, they cross the street with the phones in their face, and with no regard to the traffic that's coming at them. There's been at least a hundred times in the last three years alone that I've been approaching or in the roundabout where I've had to slam on my brakes because of someone, someone's disregard, and they plow through it, and that's going to affect the children as well. On top of that, I back up to Vista Heights, where these supposed speed bumps were put in to slow down traffic, and all they do is accelerate traffic and peel out once they hit the, the so-called round, or the, the speed bumps. I hear that day and night at three o'clock in the morning, and it's only going to get worse, and that's, that's all I have to say for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Taylor, I live at 4663 Goodwin Road. I have been there, as of yesterday, 20 years. I have a really big concern about the kids going down Goodwin. They're on their scooters or whatever they're called and everything, and they're riding in the street down. You know, not paying much attention to the cars or anything. Their bikes are street, they're, instead of being on the sidewalk, they're in the middle of the street. That's one concern. One of these days, one of those kids is gonna get hit. Another concern is because Goodwin is the first street after this thing that they want to build, we're gonna have cars parked all the way down Goodwin because they're not gonna have any place else to park. And as it is, we have a lot of rentals on Goodwin where they've got three, four, five cars in one house. And they're parking everywhere. So, it, it's just, it's out of the question as far as I'm concerned. I pay dues. I don't have much income. And I don't expect people to be moving in an apartment and not paying for the parkway and all the things that we maintain. So I would appreciate it if you'd really put yourself in our place and stop and think how you'd feel if it was your home. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Seeing none.
Chairman Peterson?
Yes.
I do have seven more names I would like to read into the record, but I missed them.
One moment, we have a person up here.
Oh, Mr.? I've been living in the vistas since 2004. And I'd like to ask a few questions. Is that what problem are we trying to solve here? Do we have a need for apartments where we live? Because I haven't noticed whatsoever. We have a sea of homes that all these people here take very good care of. Lady earlier mentioned that no notices were sent out to everybody in the community, only within 750 feet. Even with that, you got maybe 100 homes that are represented here? The rest of them didn't know. And they still don't know, probably, because there was no effort other than the 100 homes and probably all the people that are here to be contacted, to come over here and represent where they live. So what that means is that even this little amount of people here having this serious concern about where we live, it has to be, has to say something for what problem are we trying to solve? We live in Nevada. There's a lot of desert land here. Why put this here in the middle of these homes? It just makes absolutely no sense, other than maybe make some money for these people? Everybody's got a right to buy a piece of property. But where we live, we take very good care and we take, we have very high pride on what we do and how we treat our homes. And we like this property to remain, at least within consistence of the guidelines of whenever we bought this place and we paid for the dues on the HOA to maintain this green parkway the way it is, to not have to change, not have to put a three-lane road going down the way, just because to fit what this many, more homes and more traffic would bring in. I just, it just makes no sense. There are plenty of property lots everywhere else. We just don't need this here. We don't want this here. And it just makes no sense. Thank you.
Mary, how many do you have to read now? Go ahead, since we started this. Go ahead and put them in there. Let that, read them.
Colleen Williams. Ken Williams. Stephen Hook. Sarah Hook. Greg Cyfers. Charles and Linda Gray.
At this point, I will close the public hearing and we will bring it back to the commission here for discussion and our possible motion, please. Ian, you might come up if, there is a lot of questions that we had had among staff and we might want to ask. Questions from the commissioners, court staff?
I, I had two, Mr. Chairman, for staff. Ian, in, in your staff report and in your presentation tonight with respect to finding Z2, you said that the developer believed that single fam, had always anticipated single-family residential in this, or had always anticipated multifamily residential in this area adjacent to single-family residential, and that, and that it was compatible. Does the city have an opinion on compatibility?
Yeah, I, I should say, yes, the, the city agreed that that was compatible by, by virtue of approval of this, the handbook with those two land uses adjacent to each other.
And my second question is, I think we had a lot of comment tonight, you know, about traffic impact to, you know, to schools and infrastructure and drainage. If this rezoning were to be recommended by the commission to the city council and the city council were to approve the rezoning request, how, and there would be a potential future apartment complex on this site, how would that future development be reviewed by the city?
So, all multifamily projects or developments are required to go through administrative review process in which the, the city looks at what they're actually proposing. Right now, as you know, there's no project at this point. We're, we're just discussing the actual rezoning of the property. At the project level, when that administrative review is reviewed, we would look at the specifics of, you know, how are they gonna move in and out of the property, how circulation gonna move through it, fire, engineering, planning, environmental control, there's a lot of agencies are, within the city are viewed. We also route that through the school district, through RTC, the Regional Transportation Commission, as well as Washoe County Health to get input from those adjacent, those other agencies as well. So there's a lot more review that happens at that level when the project comes through.
Is that a public review? Or publicly, does it allow for a public hearing?
No, it's administrative.
When would be the dates if the commission were to forward this rezoning request to the city council? When would that potentially be for our interested public?
Commissioners and Commissioner Kerry specifically to your question, we would anticipate that the first reading of an ordinance would occur at the first meeting in September. And then the second would be, the second reading, the public hearing would be at the second meeting in September. And let me pull up the calendar and I will give you those dates. The dates would be the 11th and the 25th of September.
Okay, so first reading of the city council, September 11th, and then second reading was 25th?
Yeah, and the, and the public hearing typically occurs at the sec, at the second reading. So, we would anticipate that whatever goes forward to the city council would happen on the 25th of September in terms of a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Commissioner Peterson, I do, Chairman Peterson, excuse me. Ian, it said that on June 26, you did meet with the HOA. We've heard a lot of comments about Los Altos and that the HOA pays to maintain Los Altos parkway in the beautiful condition it's in. On the June 26, in your staff report, you said that the initial concern was that the homeowners association had was that the rezoning would pull the parcel out of the vista's planned development. Is that the case? Because it wasn't answered. Or would this parcel still be in the planned development, paying dues to maintain Los Altos parkway?
Yes, it would stay in the planned development. And they would have to pay dues or, and so forth, as appropriate.
And there was some also questions on drainage and rain.